Exhuming was done. And I don't know if you guys know where it was done or anything, but I did talk to the fire marshal. He's kind of upset with the way the exhuming was done, but um I asked, talked to Jesse Weed about the exhuming and the results and the paperwork on it to make sure, because you know, there was one error already once before made by um for DNA being contaminated. And uh he told me I didn't need to know the results, this and that, but then the sheriff Vernon tells Channel Six News that the results were in and they were inconclusive. But then I'm not notified about this, but then when I go ask Jesse Weed about it, then I don't hear nothing again. Well, then Vernon talked to my wife on the phone, tells my wife, well, I had never said nothing like that to Channel Six News, but and I heard this, it's you know, recorded, and he says to my wife, but I don't think there's anything there. I don't see it being there. If there was, BCI would have notified me and they'd have said it was there. The problem I'm having is, A, we got a sheriff that's already put it in the paper, we talked about this before, about he don't believe this case will ever be solved, uh there's no person of interest, there's no um suspects. Now I got a sheriff saying that he don't believe in exhuming, there's no DNA. It's inconclusive. I don't understand that. I don't understand that part, how this sheriff can sit here and tell the community this. This is an ongoing investigation, I thought, so this ongoing investigation, why would you tell the community something can't be solved? Something ain't there, and you don't even really know the answers to that. I mean, you understand where I'm coming from? So uh found out that the exhuming was done at the fire station, in a fire station. A, we all know a fire station is not sanitary. It's got fire trucks in there, people are in and out, you know what I'm saying? If they went to a fire, they bring the fire truck back, they don't clean them outside, they get sanitary before they bring them in a building. So here now we got, exhuming is done in a fire station instead of in Montgomery County in their morgue. Then when I asked about that, I'm told, well, we didn't want to pay. Are you serious? Thirty-five hundred dollars in the house for 12 years of done?
I would have paid to have her hidden somewhere. That's a very, very, very emotional day, and I was there that morning and I I couldn't understand why they hired her there, but I thought, you know, maybe that was the best timing to do it as soon as they-
At the fire station?
I mean, I didn't know. When my uncle was murdered, that's probably my connection with him, it was just done in Montgomery County. My uncle was graduated here from high school and he was killed and everything was done by the book and the man who murdered him was executed in two thousand and it seemed to be pretty um cut and dry because it was done right from the beginning and that's in the eighties when they didn't have any of this technology, but they proved that he was stabbed and DNA and DNA's come a long way. But that morning, I mean, to go through something like that, I talked to Vernon and my vendetta is not against anyone. It's just, I think there's just too much evidence to not reopen or do something and and if if his conflict is, I've done my OPADA training and I've done my high peace officers training at BCI in OPADA and I know that Vernon's very highly regarded there and that's fine, you know, but I don't think it should have been taken somewhere where the conflict of interest, it should have just went completely out of Fayette County's hands, completely taken her away and let some unbiased people have their hands in the mix. So that that, again, he's not judging everybody's-
So BCI didn't take the samples?
They did, but Vernon ordered that onsite and that's been documented by Morrow.
See, but the all the samples were taken by-
Montgomery County, who did the first autopsy and knew where the DNA was the first time. They came down, they took the samples again, but then Vernon requested the samples be turned over to Fayette County and Fayette County sent them to BCI.
And that's not, I mean, I would have had my daughter-
And Montgomery County, when I talked to Montgomery County, his exact words was, they didn't want to pay. BCI was free, we we have a charge, you know, to take the samples-
He should have been notified. I feel like the whole time that this has been going on, because I asked Vernon, I said, how many times has this happened Vernon? And he said, twice. That there's been an exhumant in Fayette County that he can, that there's recollection of. There was a murder in the fifties and then McKenzie. And I thought that, and I really appreciate what you guys are doing to help Rick because it's not every day that a body gets exhumed, I get that, but um it just seems as if the father and the mother in the heart of watching their daughter being dug up, which is this whole new re-feeling of, you know, her her casket broke and we're all it's just very, very emotional and it is nice that they put her in a new one, but I just feel like he didn't, they pretty much did it and said, see ya, and didn't let him have any impact. I know he didn't want to, he would not want to be there for the exhumant portion done at the fire department. I don't think anybody needs to see that, he's already seen enough, but I just feel like he hasn't had any, I mean Vernon should have said, you know what, Rick, I'm tired of girls feeling this way about me. I really do care about your daughter. I want you to come down to my office. Let's work on this together. For ten years when I was an advocate for my for my sister's house, that's how Vernon treated Rick and Rick highly regarded him, but as soon as things were getting, where Rick has no impact on his own daughter's murder, that's when the anger comes out and that's when he's not so nice anymore. And I don't know how I would feel if eleven years later, my daughter was molested and nobody helped me and just because I'm not a popular icon of Fayette County, nobody wants to really help me solve this, I don't think I could sleep knowing that this happened to my child and nobody's really making me a part of it. If if he knew that she was going to be exhumed and it was going to happen this way, he would have just said, don't exhume her. Let's just do it where we can just have Montgomery County, we would have had a fundraiser. I'm the queen of that. We could have raised easy enough money. We just didn't know what the laws were about exhumant. You can't just go dig, go get a shovel and start digging your daughter up. It was a very tidy, very eloquent process, if that's a word to use. Just those men were on it. I mean, they let Rick be an active part of the whole thing and it was, they were just on it. They were very, 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 very professional. And Rick just feels like, you know, they take her to a sheriff or a police department or a fire department and I'm there with him and I'm like, well, do you get to, I mean, six months later, they're all talking about the results and pretty much throwing him under the bus again saying, hey, you know, well, it's nothing again. You know, I don't, I don't understand the, this whole thing. Like I said, I'm not a finger pointer. I just feel like, man.
The other questions I had too, we talked about the house. Remember I told you the house was tore down, taken away?
Forty days or something after.
Here's the thing about that. Vernon Stanford told me that, I asked him, why was the house taken away? Because that's still evidence to me. If it's an ongoing investigation, anything that has to do where my daughter's body was is evidence.
Yes, keep roadhouses still up for his boys, so.
So here, the house gets tore down, he says, well, we collected, this is Vernon's words, we collected everything we need out of that house for our evidence. If that's true, then where is her sheets? Where is her pillowcases? Where are her clothes that she had on before she got in bed? Because she was found with just a tank top on, pair of panties and a pair of, two pairs of socks. So where are her clothes?
It was cold.
Right, and where is her clothes that she had on? Where is her mattress? Where is her bed? Where is the ladder? Where, everything that has to do, even if Kenny lied and said he used the ladder to go up and save my daughter and then revoked, you know, his own testimony and said, no, I didn't, I lied about that, still that ladder's part of that evidence. It's part of that crime scene because he used it, he put it against the house. It's part of that crime scene. I got a fire marshal saying, why don't they have the ladder? Where is the ladder? How do you lose them? Eight to ten foot wooden ladder, how do you lose that? I can understand, like I discussed with you guys before, you can misplace here or there, something, a piece of paper maybe getting shuffled into a different, but that much evidence gone?
Order destroyed. My aunt still has my uncle's shirt from nineteen eighty-three. She still has his shirt, his pants. They gave her everything. After the murder was solved, she has everything. She said, why do they destroy this little girl's stuff? I'm like, I don't know. I've never heard of that. Just getting rid of evidence when even the fire marshal thought it was a potential homicide.
Can I approach you guys? This is a picture. This is a picture of McKenzie, the day of the fire at school. And you can notice he's not smiling in that photograph. Okay, so the cameraman retook the new one, same day, and they asked her to smile. So I knew something was wrong with my child anyways because she didn't smile in the first one. Okay, this is a beautiful little girl. That's, that's her photograph within hours of her death. That's a beautiful little girl. Now I asked about her clothes that night, why they were destroyed. And Vernon said the clothes were destroyed because they were wet and cinched. That's what he said. That's what Dr. Jay said on his little report, they were wet. He didn't say it's cinched, wet. Vernon said they were wet and cinched. This is my little girl now. After the fire. This is at Montgomery County on the morgue table. This is what I should have remembered my daughter by, but because Vernon said the clothes were wet and cinched and I couldn't understand why you destroy evidence, because you don't destroy anything on a body, especially in a murder. But then, this is what I have to look at. You understand that? This is what I have to look at. That's my last memory now.
Your final memory, guys. You're not going to get that.
But other photographs in here, when I looked at my daughter, her clothes ain't wet. They ain't cinched. Ain't a single drop of water on her. You know why I can tell there ain't no water on her? In this photograph, and I'll show you guys, I'll be nice enough, that's her hair, where her hair was against her skin. Okay, and when they pushed her hair back, that's where the soot didn't touch. If you spray water on something, what are you going to see all over where the soot at? You're going to see water trails. You're going to see clothes wet. They're not going to stand up off of her, off of her body. You understand what I'm saying? Fire marshal, EMT, even in EMT's report, she was hot and dry. Fire marshal, she wasn't wet. Water never touched that child. Because once, one thing about firemen that they're supposed to do is when there's a fire and there's a body in the house, they quit everything. It's first priority is life, then property. So no water got to her. So why would you tell a father, well, we destroyed clothes or they're wet and cinched? Dude, they ain't, I've got the evidence. I can prove it. That no water touched that little girl's body.
But water doesn't get rid of DNA anyway.
So then the next thing-
It doesn't destroy DNA.
The next thing I questioned was not only about that, but then the next thing I questioned is, they took her from the crime scene to the hospital. Dr. Gay's exact words in his report, which I showed you guys that report, I think I gave you guys a copy of it. He did a examination on her before she went to Montgomery County, because he said he checked her buttocks, her vagina area, which was normal of a little girl, her buttock. He would have had to remove the clothes. Being the fire marshal just talked about this this morning. He'd had to take her panties off of her to examine the body, shirt off. Why did he put them back on her? Because it states in the state of Ohio, that thing I showed y'all from BCI, that y'all seen before. He should have removed those clothes, put in a preserved bag, clothes stay in the county where the body was found. We would have had the clothes. But instead he put them back on her and then sends her to Montgomery County, they remove the clothes. Dr. Gay never took one photograph in the hospital, not one photograph of her clothes in and outside of the clothes. You're supposed to flip them inside out. And she's supposed to have a sheet underneath her. So when they sent her to Montgomery County, anything, because when you, when you got a victim that died in a fire, stuff is on them, but then it starts to fall off as the body starts ripping away, stuff starts setting in. Hair, all that. She goes to the morgue and she laying on a steel table in that morgue and in one of the photographs-
Dr. Messger, who's the coroner who I worked for a month, I've also said that that's very unpracticing to lay them on the table.
In this photo-
You do lose stuff, you lose pieces.
This photograph right here, here's her hair laying right beside her head. See it right here on the table? Where's that hair at? Did anybody take that hair and go send it off to see if any other male hair was with it? Any dog, cat, you know what I'm saying, that hair? Anything that should have been laying on a white sheet, but here's her hair laying on a steel bed. That's evidence. I can prove it. I mean, that's, that's evidence. Because it has to be tested, sent to be tested. All these, see what I'm saying about the mistakes? I don't understand why these many mistakes were made in this homicide of non, um, normal, I mean, of procedures that's been around for years, especially photographs.
Oscar, Oscar McKenzie said anytime they had a homicide at the funeral home where he worked at for a long time, which my uncle did too, he said that they always came naked and wrapped in sheet. My sister died and she came naked. They gave us her stuff and she wasn't even in a homicide. He said they come in naked and then the family decides what they're going to put on.
There's her socks at the foot of her. There's her panties. There's her tank top. When you blow that up, there, like I said, there's no water on her body anywhere. Anywhere is there a sign of even a drip of water. There's nothing. And then her panties, when I had to blow it up, right here, on this side and on the other side, they're ripped. There's holes in them. Plus the panties are too big. They're not of those normal little girls panties. If any of y'all have granddaughters or daughters. That to me tells me somebody was in hurry to put them on it, but here's the question, did Dr. Gay put those underwear on backwards? Or did the person that they found the male DNA put them on backwards? See what I'm going with this? But here's my daughter laying at the hospital and he supposedly does a full report and examination, sends her off, off. And the clothes go with her and everything else, but nothing comes back with her, but appearing earrings. That's what came back. Then on top of not only that, but then I got the earrings, also DeMarlo had hair samples from her, from the fire. I've got those. I asked about the clothes back then, right after I got the earrings, which was right after we buried her. A week later I got the earrings and her hair. And I asked about the clothes. Oh, well, they, they kept clothes because they're evidence. It's a murder. Then I find out three months later, they destroyed them. There is no clothes. But I then also did not get a phone call from anybody saying, do you want your child's clothes?
I don't get that at all.
And that is supposed to be procedure.
No, why didn't, why didn't Montgomery County put her on today?
She came in that way.
Because we, we do-
She started at Fayette County though, didn't she? And then they felt like because it happened, but the arson happened in Fayette County, that they would transport her to a larger facility. Now, that is all, who knows why.
But you got to remember too, she left Fayette County, went to Montgomery County, left Montgomery County, came back to Fayette County, three hours later went back to Montgomery County.
I don't understand.
And stayed in those clothes the whole time until Montgomery County got her on the last one and that was because somebody made a phone call and said it was an arson. Well, here's the thing. In Ohio State law, and Ron Steeman, the fire marshal agrees with me, in Ohio State law, you are supposed to treat a fire and a homicide and a fatality in a fire, arson and homicide first. Before accident, you got to prove that it was an accidental. So automatically, when that call came in, it's an arson and it's a homicide immediately. You go to the crime scene, you start it immediately, homicide, arson. Now the fire marshal got there at four thirty-four in the morning. Then he ruled it as an arson. He sent Kenny Monford, the boyfriend, immediately to BCI that night and take a lie detector test. So they already knew what was, there was some foul play. But then you got a sheriff that says there was no foul play. Then you got a Dr. Gay that puts in his own report, likely an accident. That should have never been put in that coroner's report. Was approved an accident, so he shouldn't even said accident. And when you look at it, this certificate says homicide now. What the mistake was made was, they treated this as an accident right from the get-go because who was involved? And I can prove that. I can prove because of who was involved. And it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been treated. How do you go, I've got seven eyewitnesses and I've told you all this before. Still today, you got a sheriff saying, oh, it's an ongoing investigation, we got a new detective on it. Ryan McFarlane's been on it for four years. Still ain't talked to a witness yet. And you just spoke to the first person there.
The, the last time you were here, wasn't BCI opening up their own investigation?
And here's what happened there. Ryan McFarlane was in that meeting with BCI and Jesse Weed that that got scheduled for to see if BCI would take it. BCI called me, his name is Roger Davis, that's the detective. And he said, Donald, I can tell you right now, we're not going to take this case. One, we don't have a man, the manpower, one person to put on the case. Number two, if you are saying you got what you got and that sheriff's office don't have what you have, we got issues. We got problems.
That's been a huge issue.
Because they should have everything you got. You should not have it. They should have it, which is true. Those photographs, I should not, you understand, as a parent, you're all parents. Would you want to look at your child that way? Would you want to look at your child that way? Would you want to look at your child that way, Jack?
Rick, Rick probably would. Rick, Rick told me, he probably would have not thought this was a homicide directly in the beginning. I cannot believe he did this. I'm so proud of him because I did not know him at the time, just a little bit. My dad died, Marty Lynch died the same, like right around the same time and we connected somehow through that benefit that we were doing for his daughter, but from the start, he said, because of the molestation and her being afraid, I used to clean her teeth at the Fayette County Clinic with Peggy Blackburn and all of us. And Peggy said, I wonder why when she comes with Rick, she's so smiley and happy and not afraid to get her teeth cleaned. But when she comes with the mom and the stepdad, she wouldn't talk to us. We're like, Kenzie, honey, what's wrong? Those things you don't even think about, you know, until something like this happens and then your brain goes, maybe something was happening to this little girl. The system failed her. There's nothing we can do to fix that now. You know, if one of our grandchildren was being molested or one of my children, I would have fought tooth and nail like he did. You know, I know it's a hard thing to prove. There's very little funding for adult protection services. I worked for the adult protection through um, the Community Action Program, but at the same time, if that part failed, why can't we, Vernon would look better if this was solved. We're fixing something that broke that needs to be fixed because the mother was at, there's a report that I saw, this lady that I met in Jeffersonville was the neighbor of, when the house was on fire, and she said the mother wasn't even crying. She was sitting there on the couch just kind of rocking, like playing with her fingernails and she said, why aren't you like over there screaming, get my baby? You know, get my child. It was like, everything was just like this vague, weird, the longer the house burns, the less chance that anybody will find out the truth. I don't know how that clicks in a mother. I have no idea. But that's what taunted him. And he got a recording device and the mom said, oh, Rick, she's much more peaceful now. I mean, I would never say that.
She said, her exact words was, a week before the fire, she already, McKenzie, my daughter, eight years old, already spoke to God and was ready to go see God. So that she knew that night when she died, she was in peace. Because she already knew she was going to go see God. I don't know an eight-year-old that thinks about death, you know what I'm saying? They think about planning and-
Unless they're afraid of something.
You know, but also we got the brother. Now this man admitted being at that crime scene, admitted being there. But still today, I never took a lie detector test. And one of the things he said was, he drank a large glass of iced tea with my daughter at eleven-thirty that night. At eleven-thirty that night, one full, large glass of tea holds two hundred and fifty milliliters of liquid that would go to your bladder. Then on top of that, it takes two to five hours before you'll release that liquid. In other words, for your body, your bladder to say, and your brain to say, okay, it's time to pee. If that's true, in, in two hours would have been one-thirty in the morning. My daughter was already dead. Right here, in my daughter's, this is the autopsy report. My daughter had sixty milliliters of food in her system when she died. Or when they did the autopsy, sixty milliliters. That's that quarter cup. That's how much food she had in her. So she didn't hardly have anything in her. And she had on here, five milliliters of urine in her bladder. Five milliliters of urine in her bladder. That's that. That's five milliliters, one teaspoon of urine. So what happened to the two hundred and forty-five milliliters? So I know what you're going to say, well, some people when they die, they release their fluids. My daughter didn't. The reason why, in the autopsy report, right here, the colon contained foreign stool. Food was stolen in her colon. It was just foreign. So she didn't release nothing. So how did this brother tell the policeman that she drank a large glass of iced tea with him at eleven-thirty? And that's all she had in her bladder? But he's never been brought in and asked a single thing about this crime?
Well, actually, I know a little bit about that. About having, I was a biology major at Miami years ago and one of our classes, we drank fluid and we had to measure how much each person went in the, in the lab class. It only took like an hour to boy what he drank. So I'm, I would think that within an hour or so, she would have went to the bathroom and got rid of the liquid.
So that would put it at, that would put it at twelve percent, which, you know, she was dead. So she didn't get to go use the restroom. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Because compared, they brought her out of the house at two oh two. They knew she was dead for a while in the house.
I would say his numbers, his time would have to be off.
Yeah, but also, why would my kid only go to, that much food in her system? Because it takes twenty-four hours to seventy-two hours to form.
Right.
You know, to, before you use that restroom.
But it'll leave your, but if that was in the stomach, that you'll, you'll, it'll go into the intestine.
Right, right, in the small intestines.
Right.
Right, and then from the small intestine, it goes to the colon and forms, so right. But that's all she had in her. So that tells me my child didn't eat lunch that day at school, didn't eat dinner.
Probably didn't eat much for dinner.
No. And, but I got a kid there, a guy standing there saying, hey, I was there. I was there collecting two pizzas that night at eleven-thirty. Went and got two pizzas that my daughter supposedly brought home from the school functions. And you don't even send him for a lie detector test, you don't even bring him in and question him. Detective Brown, first interview with this kid, this guy, Mary Ann's brother, was six years later, two thousand and twelve. He walked into the house, sat down with him, did an interview, if that's what you want to call it, without even a pen or a piece of paper. So how was he going to remember what the guy he was told? You know what I'm saying? He didn't write down no notes or nothing. And the reason I know this, because the wife said it. That's how the interview went.
Rick also said that she had a very big issue with her bladder.
Yeah, she wet it in bed.
He said he felt bad because he experienced similar things when he was a child and they were very, they would take her face like a dog in the floor and say, and that's why he thinks the panting situation may be off, maybe she had to wear somebody else's panties because she urinated a lot. But he was very loving towards her. He's like, sissy, it's okay. Just go lay in your brother's bed and we'll clean it up tomorrow, whatever. But who would give a child a large glass of fluids if they know she's got a urinating problem?
And she was on medicine. They knew that.
Yeah.
The mother knew that, you know, she had a doctor fit and someone that prescribed the medication, because she had a bellywetting problem. And she always woke up at the same time, every night, woke up. She would take, go take, take her clothes off, put new ones on and then lay a towel across her bed and lay on, on, you know, because of where it was wet. But like I said, nothing was collected in that room, no photographs were taken, no crime scene.
On the bed, you know, there's certain things that are very critical. I mean-
Well, to, to, to the point, you've, you've been here a few times before and we all know that there's things that aren't done correctly. Even Jess, I'm sure that's why he ordered the exhumation, to, to verify and find out whatever he could do. What, what are you asking about it now?
I, what I would like to see is three things. I want to see the resignation of Vernon Stanford, if it can be done. Or at least a suspension until the investigation of not only my daughter's death, but why things weren't done the way they were supposed to by protocol. Meaning, show me documents where people signed this, signed that. Because Detective Brown, and I've already got this proof through the fire marshal. Detective Brown didn't show up at that scene till nine o'clock the next morning. That's when he was ordered then to be the lead detective on that scene. Then he didn't even do nothing. He didn't question a witness. He didn't collect nothing or take photographs of the room or anything like you're supposed to. But Vernon was in charge of that crime scene from the time he pronounced McKenzie dead until Detective Brown got there at nine o'clock. So who made all the calls? Who, who's the one that made the decision to send my daughter to the hospital and not leave her body at the crime scene where you're supposed to? Who made the decision to send her to Montgomery County or to the hospital, from the hospital to Montgomery County, back to Montgomery, or Fayette County, back? Who made that decision? Who made the decision that, and I'm going to tell you, um, if I'm correct, because I'm not from here- Who made the decision that, and I'm gonna tell you, um, if I'm correct, cause I'm not from here, Dr. Gayheart, I guess, was the coroner years ago?
Just Gay.
No.
Gibhardt.
Huh?
Gabhart.
Gilbert, okay. Now, I was told he was seventy-something years old or something, he was an older guy, older fellow. Um, but Dr. Gay was the one that was the coroner on my daughter's death.
Just active.
Okay, Dr. Gay was only fifty-four years old when he passed away. He was forty-four when my daughter died. You know what I'm saying, forty-four years old. Vernon's exact words, and that's why I wish the man was sitting in here. He told me that the reason that Dr. Gay didn't go in Mackenzie's room and do where they put a grid up, collect evidence, was he was old and fragile. I'm forty-eight years old, and I can go out here right now and climb a tree. So I know forty, forty years old is not old and fragile. So why would you tell, why, my question to you guys is, why are they lying to me? Why are they lying to me? If you're lying to me about certain things, and I'm proving it, why, why are you lying? The only reason you would lie is you're hiding something, what are you hiding? There's no other excuse for what happened, and I, just like with the mother and the boyfriend. Everybody knows they told thirteen different stories. Fire marshal, everybody knows they're liars. There's a reason they're lying, because they're hiding what really happened at that house, well, it's the same way why I've gotta look at with the sheriff's office, because that's the one that's making all the lies, up cause the other two are dead. So why are you lying to me? You know I'm gonna prove it, you know I'm gonna go look for it. I even took the time, this is how dedicated I am to my daughter's murder. I took the time out to literally go get three windows, put my hand through those three windows, to prove that that window wasn't busted out the way the boyfriend said it was. I even, when he got carpet, soaked it with kerosene, knocked the heater over, that Mary Ann said, the dog knocked the heater over, and that's what caused the fire. Knocked it over, guess what happened, nothing lit. Then took a lighter, tried to light the carpet, didn't lit, and I got a fire marshal this morning telling me, "Well, of course you weren't gonna let it." That's not how kerosene, you can't light kerosene that way. You can't do diesel fuel, so now I know it's gasoline, I know what was used to it, set the house on fire. But my question is, what, why is there so lack, the lack in this? Why hasn't people been brought in and interrogated the way you're supposed to interrogate somebody? Why are people not, um, asked about that part? I mean, I showed you, I think, did I show you all the photo of the house on fire?
Mm-hmm.
I got that, but why, why do I have it? You understand, why do I have it? And the sheriff's office is saying, and quote, "I can prove it," and when I say I can prove it, you guys know I will do it. I was told, "Hey, we're looking for those two tapes, Donald, that you want back, but here's the thing. We'll give you those two tapes if you give us a copy of that house on fire." "Really?" Then call me up and tell me, "We couldn't find the tapes, they're gone." Now I've got two tapes to listen to, two tapes of the mother telling them, talking about the fire. They're gone. They're gone. I got a ladder, gone, I got clothes, gone, I've got sheets, gone.
One small thing I could see, I really could, I could see, like, well, you know, ring a earring or something like that, but even Dr. Mesker said, those little, little tiny things can come up missing. He said, "Chris, that's normal." But the, the whole thing for me is, is if you take this book as, as gentlemen, and you open up to the first page and you see inhalant down the stairs leading to the daughter's room, that right there, that right there is enough, I mean, she said, "Um, well, Rick, on three different recordings, Rick, I think that it was leaking and it sprayed out." Why in the hell would you light it in front of your daughter's bedroom door? Why is she in panties and a t-shirt if it was that cold? He got ahold of the Weather Channel, they were able to document through satellites that it was forty-six degrees that night. Why would you buy the kerosene?
But here's another thing.
You spilled stuff down your, the stairs.
But here's another thing, the mother admits, they heard it, they heard the tapes. Her exact words was, Kenny was in boxer shorts, underwear, she kept changing it from boxer's underwear, standing in the driveway. "I called his parents to bring us clothes." Your child's in the house burning, you're on a cellphone, and you called his parents to bring you clothes. So then they bring him a pair of pants and her a coat, that's what she said, and she says, "I, I was in flannels." I asked her, "What would you wear in the bed?" Flannels. She's in flannels, but my daughter's in a pair of under, underwear and a t-shirt, not, you know what I'm saying, tank top. She's in flannels, nice and warm, okay? But here's the thing, if Kenny's mom and dad brought him clothes, and these other witnesses that I have, that were up during the fire, that got knocked on their door by Mary Ann and Kenny, and they can remember him being in a pair of pants, not a pair of underwear or boxer, but a pair of pants. And she says, "I called his parents and he brought..." Why did they leave the scene and leave, knowing that my daughter was in the house too, and the house on fire? Why did they leave, but then, why didn't they call nine-one-one? But then I asked, the sheriff's office had you questioned his mom and dad and make sure they brought clothes that night, and, no, why? Are you kidding me, come on, man, I mean, seriously? I, I have no background in law enforcement, I have no background in lawyer, I have no background in, in medical, but by God, I guarantee you, I could take this book right here, this is no lie. And I told Jesse this on the phone yesterday, I could take this book right here, walk into a courtroom, and I guarantee you, I could convince twelve jury who killed my daughter, I guarantee it. But I also can guarantee you that I can prove somebody didn't do their job. And that's why this is messed up, so here's what I'm asking for, like I said, the suspension of Mc- of Vernon Stanford until this investigation's over, not only of Mackenzie, but the investigation of why things weren't done the right way, protocol. Number two, I'm asking for that the fire marshal, who still has the fire evidence, be brought back into this case, because I got off the phone with him this morning, and Vernon Stanford's department still has not invited the fire marshals back. And they don't know why, I don't know why, why would you not invite them back into the case? Why are you leaving them out? He was the one that went there, took photos of her room, collected evidence. Why are you not bringing them back in? Cause see, what happened was when BCI, Eva Hall, and Cornelius came down, they took this case back years ago, before Eva Hall retired because of her daughter's medical reasons. She was supposed to finish a book, a folder, and put it on each desk, the fire marshal's desk, the Jesse Weed's desk, and the sheriff's desk. Nobody got one. Nobody knows why Eva Hall didn't finish and put her paperwork where it was supposed to go. But Vernon Stanford, and Eva Hall asked the fire marshals unit to step out, back off, let us do this, and then when we're done, it happened, they weren't brought back in, why? Why weren't the fire marshals brought back into this case? Because every mistake that's been made of what happened in my daughter's room, the evidence that's no longer here for what happened in my daughter's room, is gone. So as far as the, the white male DNA they had in the beginning, and the, uh, evidence to what happened in my daughter's room, is gone, you might as well throw it out the window. And there's only one county that screwed that up, not three, one, Fayette County messed that up. Your, your leading, uh, medical examiner, which is Dr. Gay, and your leading detective at the time of the fire, which was Vernon Stanford, then Detective Brown. But I'm also tired of somebody blaming the dead people, they might be dead, but they're no fake. Their evidence is not dead, and their lack of evidence is not dead. Even though you die tomorrow, everything you had to do with Mackenzie should be in one room with all the other evidence. So it doesn't matter if you kick the bucket tomorrow, it should still be there. If it's not, why? That's the question. Where Mackenzie's stuff is at, there was only two people that had keys to that room where her evidence was. Two keys, so my question is, if the fire marshal didn't come down here and open up that door and sign on any papers of what he was looking for, going in to retrieve, where's the ladder? Because the last time he was here, and he left, that ladder was sitting in that room.
Which two people?
Which, which-
Which two people?
Had keys.
Keys, Vernon Stanford and the leading detective.
So it would've been Phil Brown.
Uh, Ryan and Farner would be now, back for you. Oh, when the ladder come up missing, we don't know when the ladder come up missing.
He said he had it, he would never get rid of it, but now it's missing, so they don't know why it's missing, Rick asked for it back.
No, I asked for the, to see the ladder, and they said it was gone. And then when I called Ron Stevens, the fire marshal, he said he was down just a few months before this, it was a couple of years ago. And I said, "They're saying they don't have that ladder," and he said, "No, that ladder was leaning against the wall right with Mackenzie's stuff. Don't tell me that ladder is not there," and it's not, so somebody went in that room.
But you're, you're-
Two people had keys.
I, I under- understand, I'm not challenging what you're telling me, I'm just trying to get clear-
Okay.
On, back to what Dan asked, because, believe me, we, we will not be able to empathize with your loss.
Yes, sir.
We can sympathize for your loss, but we, we're not gonna get to the level of involvement that you are. So we're trying to understand, you know, pretty clearly, and I, believe me, Dan, Dan has to, Dan has to take over and tell him, tell, tell people what I say, cause I get jacked up about it too.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I, I wanna try to focus on what, what's the third thing-
We need to know clearly what you're asking, and you've told us too.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
But you're-
All right, what am I gonna do?
My understanding, the first one is you're wanting us to, uh, have Vernon, you wanted Vernon to resign.
Right, or-
And the second, you wanted us to suspend him.
Or suspend him.
Res- resign or suspend, get the fire marshal back.
And get the fire marshal back.
Now, does that include BCI?
No.
Well, see, the thing with BCI is, what they told him is they have nothing to come back and investigate, cause everything's gone.
All BCI is doing is what, I didn't explain that part to you. I, I cut, went somewhere else, I mean, you gotta-
I just wanna tell you, these guys have to-
I apologize, but you gotta understand what I've been, this is twelve years.
I get it.
This ain't like yesterday, this is twelve years.
We understand that.
Um, BCI said what they were gonna do was send out emails to everybody that had their fingers on this case. That's John Hicks, that's, uh, Eva Hall, that's the fire marshal's unit, Montgomery County, anybody that's had anything to do with Mackenzie. They want all the records brought to them, then what they're gonna do with those records is see what wasn't done, why it wasn't done, and then if it can still be done.
That's the fire marshal that's asking then.
No, that's BCI.
BCI.
Uh, Roger Davis is his name.
Okay.
That's what he told me on the phone. But his exact words was, "If I got all this that I'm saying I've got, and the sheriff's office don't have it, BCI don't have it."
What, BCI hasn't asked for that?
There, that was the other thing Roger Davis said, there was gonna, if they get to it, they would contact me, and then I would have to meet them and BCI, give them-
Copies.
Copies of what I have, right.
Original again, cause you're right.
Right. So that's where we're at with BCI, it's not like they came in and they're taking the case and they're gonna move forward it, cause honestly, he told me on the phone, Roger Davis, it's probably ain't gonna go nowhere. There's so much missing, you know what I'm saying, there's so much destroyed, lost, uh, no documents that weren't signed, and it, it screwed up. So the only thing I've got left is the fire marshal, the fire, that's all we got. And the fire marshal and Jesse Weed yesterday admitted, they don't have to put a match in somebody's hand to say arson. But Jesse Weed wants more, whatever, but here's the thing, like I asked Jesse Weed, and I did ask Jesse Weed this yesterday. I said, "Ain't it a concern to you, if you're the prosecutor, to prosecute a case, all these agencies have to do their work, they have to find witnesses, this, that, then they bring it all to the prosecutor. They lay on his desk, he looks at it, okay, yeah, I've got enough to indict, now I'm gonna proceed it through the courts and get indictments, see, you know. But if I don't, then it sits there, you understand what I'm saying, then he says, 'I need this done, this done, this done.' I asked Jesse Weed, I said, "Ain't you concerned that nothing's hitting your desk?" I got seven witnesses, I've got the photographs of the fire, I've got, you see what I'm saying? I can't get it to Jesse Weed, I can't walk into Jesse Weed's office and say, "Here, here's your evidence, man, right here." Because you know what happens, Jesse Weed no longer becomes a prosecutor, he becomes a witness. So he's done, so he can't even take this, you know what I'm saying? But it shouldn't be me, the father's job to, to do this, it should be our Fayette County Sheriff's Office. And that's the thing, if, if the, the time of this crime, if they did not have the knowledge to, to handle this case, they should've asked somebody to come in and do it. They should've asked somebody, just like with the house being destroyed and everything. If they could not send Doc, uh, Philip Brown up in that room, or Dr. Gay up in that room to, to grid it off and collect the evidence, then they should've brought somebody from BCI on the forensic side. They could've, what I'm saying, they could've brought somebody in from the forensic side to come in and, and do that job, you know what I'm saying? Because let me tell you something, when that guy got shot down here on thirty-five and seventy-one, they had no problem with sending the car to have it, um, fingerprinted and, and evidence collected, they had no problem putting the grid up, they had no problem putting two lead detectives on it, they had no problem calling BCI and they come in and help. So why is that case of a person that lived?
I wanna bring you back to number three.
Okay.
What, because I, I appreciate very much your intensity here, but I don't wanna lose track of what's on the three.
Number three?
Yeah.
Hundred million dollars.
Just a hundred million dollars.
Just.
For the loss of my daughter, how you put a price on a child? How you put a price on what's been lost, what's been destroyed, what's, you know, this case is not gonna go nowhere. If, if you can bring in a, a sheriff into this room, and they can bring in everything that I just mentioned that ain't there, and show it to me, then let's do it, but if you can't, we got admission. And I guarantee you, they're not gonna bring in her sheets, they're not gonna bring in her pillowcases, they're not gonna bring in her clothes that she had on before she went to bed that night. They're not gonna bring in photographs of what was done at Fayette County Memorial Hospital, they're not gonna be able to bring back the clothes that are now gone.
And I would have a vendetta against Vernon like he does, he's angry, I mean, I, I just wanna help him as much as I can. But we all know as well, as yesterday, the Harris family, that house is still standing, it was a house I grew up in, randomly, it was a house that I was, grew up in as a little girl before we moved to California, and the Harrises said, "There was never any attention of any kind to tear that down, of any speaking. Zero, I just don't understand why, instead of anger and upset, take it out of his hands and give it, this is due, above the money, he knows the money's not gonna happen, it's just his way of saying, 'Get something done, so that I'm not suing you, can't we just have a new trial? Can't we just find out, question, interrogate some people?' They're all dying, there's not gonna be anything left. He's not gonna get his peace on this earth, he's gonna get it in heaven, but I've seen it age him, and he doesn't even look like the same Rick. So I don't know.
The thing of it is, like I said, ain't no amount of money gonna bring my daughter back, I've told you all that before, it ain't about the money. It's about, people need to start standing up and doing their job, that's what it's for. And I know the amount that I was sued for is, that will bring, that will bring attention to this community. That will bring attention to this town, because so many things are happening in this town, and it keeps getting swept under the rug. I can't be bought, and I've said this before, I can't be bought out. You're not gonna shut my mouth, oh, this is my child, this was a little girl that I paid to be born, that I held, that I changed her diaper, that I raised as a single father for years, that got taken away from me real quick.
Do you know what Vernon said at the exhumement? There was only thirteen people there that day, super early in the morning, cold, I walk over to him and I said, "This is horrible, isn't it?" And he said, "You know what, Christie, probably the, the hardest thing for me is I've never known a more zupran little girl. Let's prove if something happened to her, let's, let's let her voice speak through her box." That's all that's left of her is a box of information, including this, and Vernon said, "She was the sweetest little girl I know why he's doing this, he just gets angry." Well, after twelve years, I'd be angry too, a year, I'd probably be pretty humble, you know? But because the prosecutors did the right thing with my uncle's murder, and because somebody else was almost murdered that same day, and my uncle was a white man, killed by a white man, it was a whole different thing, John Byrd Junior, I mean, we literally, the newscasters said, "You are the most truthful, eloquent family we've ever met." And I said, "Because justice was doing its service, we didn't have to be angry." They were doing everything they were supposed to do, and it was easy, n- not easy, but the clemency trials and all that were just a wash, it was just taxpayer money wasted. We haven't even had a trial. If it, if something comes up and he's proven wrong, then he'll let it go, he don't want the money. Rick doesn't even care about money, it's not that, it would've been that way from the beginning, it's just, can't we put some sticks in this a little bit more? He's already had to dig his baby up, I don't care how you look at it, that's the most morbid thing to have to experience as a parent, to see this little pink casket come up. And then, well, we didn't tell you anything, we didn't tell you because we know how angry you are.
But then to be told, but then to be told that-
Yeah, say.
-there's a possibility of defense, I always think about what the defense would do with this case. And let me tell you something, they need to, I understand why the prosecutor can't do nothing. I'm, you know, I'm thinking like the defense too, first thing the defense is gonna say, "You did it in a fire station?" I'm, you know, I'm thinking like the defense too. First thing the defense is gonna say, you did it in a fire station? Was it sanitary? Did it, oh, that, that, if you did get DNA, guess what? No good, contaminated. You did it in a fire station. Are you kidding me? I mean, if I had to, and here's the sad part, this is what nobody's looking at. I want this just as much as you guys. I know you guys do. But I will take every dime, and I've said this, I will sell everything I own to raise that thirty-five hundred dollars, to have it redug up again and sent, and I'll pay for Montgomery County to do the examples again, and put it through their forensic, and then get it, get the results. You know, without it being done, to me, I gotta question, you know, I get tired of, every time I walk in that sheriff's office and the first picture I see on that wall, it ain't Vernon. It dawn knocks, Mayberry. This ain't Mayberry. This is Fayette County. This is a good community. Good people in this town. Good children in this town. Quit treating it like it's Mayberry. Quit making a joke out of Fayette County. I mean, you understand what I'm saying? I shouldn't have to go into sheriff, and that's another thing. Why is my daughter reward poster in the jail? Why is it not on the outside window where people can see it? Only people who go in there is somebody that's going in there to get their fingerprints done, or being arrested, or dropping off property. That's who sees my daughter's reward poster? And you got this big, nice glass windows on the out, you know what I'm saying, on the outside of that door, sitting there, and my daughter's pictures inside, inside the jail? Nothing over here at the sheriff and next building with her photograph on it? You know, the nice, beautiful reward posters that we made. They're sitting on a stack oven that tall, or sitting on top of a file cabinet inside the Anex Building. Are you kidding me? You know what that tells me? Disrespect to my daughter. Disrespect to McKinsey. Everything has been done.
Do you think that the exhumement, do you kinda understand that, how that happened? I know you guys were supportive of that and thank you, cause that, that was huge. I mean, he said, first thing he said was, is Dan and Tony and Jack helped me do this. And I said, wow. I said, he said, it's this morning, don't say anything. He's been very private about, we, just a few of us there. And when her body went towards Jeffersonville, I thought that to be so awkward, like, from the start, to go through that professional grave digging. And then for her to go towards Jeffersonville, and then him and I go to eat with his wife at Denny's, and I'm like, why is she here? Why would you do that here? Why, cause as soon as the air hits the contents, which Mauro come up to me and has said fifty times, we've done a lot of cases, we've done a lot of bodies, but that one was the strangest one we've ever laid our hands on, because nothing anybody said was the way it was supposed to be. They put her in an exhumement bag at, at no charge to him, to hope that they could, that someday they had to preserve. And, and then either they're like, why is she going that way? I mean, and nobody would answer his questions, so then he's angry again. Why do you guys treat me like I'm the outsider? This is my child. I mean, if, if people would put some kid gloves on a little bit and help the understanding as to why all these things don't go in the right hands. We don't, I, who wants to beat up enough? I just don't know what to say. It's like twelve years later, we failed again.
The thing of it is, yeah, that was a waste. I mean, honestly, of a, a, a.
Of emotion.
A defense attorney will eat that a lot. They'll eat it a lot. So, that was a waste. That was a waste of me going through another burial, burial of my daughter. Everything. That was a waste. That now you guys, not you guys, I'm sorry, that this county put me into this position that I have to maybe have to do a third exhuming of my daughter. You know, a third funeral.
Why doesn't, why doesn't everything that Rick say at least be taken into perspective to the Sheriff's Department, say, they dug that ground? That farmer knows that that house was, they dug a hole with excavators and dumped the house in a hole and used it for farming. Why isn't that dug up? I mean, let's just make, if he's, if he's just grieving and can't get past it, then let's prove that that's the problem, and then just let it go. We've let it go. The guy that burned my uncle, it's done. My uncle's in heaven. The man that did it will never hurt anybody else. It's done. There's no, there's no need to fight anymore. He's not gonna ever quit. And I don't always agree with the way he does it. I tried to keep him, you know, on this path, let's pray before we go in there. Softer tones, keep your, keep your anger down. Oh, my gosh, I don't know if after an exhumement, they say, Rick, we're not gonna tell you nothing, because we know how you run your mouth. Oh, my gosh. Talk to him like he's in a father who's grieving. Twelve years later, does it hurt?
Here, here's the thing.
It doesn't hurt me.
When I saw Jesse Weed in that meeting, I didn't ask, I don't need to know the results. He didn't have to tell me the results, that maybe found something. All I wanted to see was the documents showing that it went from this person's hand to this person's hand to BCI. That Montgomery County, when they turned it over to the sheriff's office, somebody at the sheriff's office signed that paper saying they, they took the samples. Then those samples went to BCI, BCI signed, you don't understand what I'm saying? The paper trail, what you're supposed to do. And being told, no, we ain't telling you nothing, we're gonna use this for this reason, but then here we go. It's been, the, the results came in in the beginning of December, here we are in January, and nobody's been brought in yet. If they had something, see, that's how, when you, when you don't show action, then you start to question that action. And I start questioning like, well, then they must not have nothing, because if they did, they wouldn't want this over with. They would wanna bring that person in. Hey, we got your DNA, you know what I'm saying? And you need to answer questions. But nothing? And then, and then to tell me on the phone, well, when the commissioners call me and talk to me, then I'll get back with you. But I can tell you right now, and this is what Jesse Weed said, I will tell those commissioners, I don't know where her clothes are, where the ladder is, where this is, he don't even know. But why don't the prosecutor know?
One second.
Wouldn't that be a question for a prosecutor to ask?
What do you, what can you, as, as our commissioners, when we vote you in, I vote you guys in, I like all of you. I don't know you personally, but I do know you guys. Doesn't mean anything more, you don't treat me any different. What can you do? As a commissioner, he can't get anything from the place that he should feel the most confidence with, the sheriff's office. What can you guys do? What can you do to help this man? Is it, is it, is it a rotunda that he's just gonna keep spinning in this, this gerbil, you know? Oh, my gosh, he, he, he likes you guys because he feels like you listen to him, but everybody's been listening to him for a long time. He's, a lot of people have failed him and turned their back on him. And is there anything else he can do? Is it coming to you the right place to go, or where does he go? What can he do? To get a case reopened?
Typically, we have conversations. That's the biggest thing that we do.
Yes.
Is to try to get some new light shine on, on something that this kind of takes away. And, you know, if, if a conversation with someone outside of Fayette County can produce, can produce some results, there's nothing saying we wouldn't have that conversation outside of Fayette County. But, believe me, you're gonna be the best advocate. Now, we, we, you know, we can call, we can call maybe Attorney General's Office.
Yeah, we can go up that way and come back down.
Well, I know that, I know.
So, we've, we've talked to Jess.
Right.
We've talked to Vernon.
Right. I, I know that they just had a private, uh, a detective investigator arrested. State's Attorney General's Office just did, up there in Sandusky, Ohio, for the, almost the same exact here.
Cold case.
You know, negligence, uh.
Mr. DeWine has been very vocal about working on cold cases.
Yes, he has.
But here's the thing, I looked into the, I looked, and that's still today, I, on the internet, show you. He asked in two thousand sixteen for all unsolved homicides to be turned into the State's Attorney General's office. McKinsey still, still today has not been turned over.
And we can ask for it.
Yes.
I mean.
That's what I mean. From your, from your perspective, as people that we look up to in our community, um, maybe that would be the, the case. I've met Mike DeWine a thousand times, all these domestic seminars. He's a very compassionate man. He, he really does listen. He does the two days in May. He cares about victims and violence and stuff. Maybe that's what we can do. Not through his voice as the angry dad, which you guys do understand, as your voice picking up the pieces of what he's giving you. Can't this book be, can't this book be, you know, photo, yeah, we don't wanna give you, you know, re-take, takes of everything. Sit this on his desk, you guys do a memorandum of what you feel, give it to them, and let this cold case not be so cold. Get it warm again, at least warm. It doesn't have to be hot. People don't have to, heads don't have to roll. They'll roll if something comes up. But in the meantime, just faith in you guys, maybe putting it in the right hands.
The thing of it is, is, the thing of it is, I, I, we met, and you, and we, we have many, three or four times over McKinsey. And you guys have done everything I've asked, I know that, you know?
Thank you.
And I, and I do, I thank you for that. But at the same time, I know you guys can only go so far and do so much too. But there is a time when you all have to sit back and say, why is, you know, I'm, I'm seeing Mr. Brandon in my office, and I've asked this, and this ain't going, you know, it's still, why ain't it moving? I mean, that'd be a question of your own to ask, you know, why, why is, you know, just like, they keep on an ongoing investigation. It can't be an ongoing investigation if you have nothing.
For doing one.
There can't be an ongoing investigation if you are not making some progress moving forward. You understand what I'm saying?
This county may not have the money for cold case. I, I get that. There's very, very small funding for child abuse, adult.
But the thing of it is.
Why, maybe there's other counties that can help.
But the thing of it is, if it was considered a cold case, that it's not being considered a cold case, and it should, then I can hire my own. You understand what I'm saying? I can do funds and hire my own private investigator, because I know already the laws that as long as it's an ongoing investigation, nobody can come in and take this case unless they're invited. And they can only be invited by two people, or three people actually. That's your chief of police, which he's already turned it down. Jesse Weed, the prosecutor, and Vernon Stanford, the sheriff, that can invite somebody in to look at this case, okay? But here's the thing, I listened to Vernon sitting there and say, he spent all this money on lead, you know, detectives, highly. But the first detective he pays, that we pay, Fayette County pays, is related to the fire chief at the fire. So, how is he gonna look at a case without being biased if his son is the chief that was there at the fire? You understand what I'm saying? That should've never happened. That man, John Hicks, should've never been brought in because of his son working for the sheriff's office at the time of my daughter's death. Plus, also was the fire chief at the fire. So, you wait, you played all that money. A defensive, you understand what I'm saying? Nobody's looking at this on the defensive side of what they're gonna eat up and chew up and spit out. I do not wanna go to a trial and hear mistrial. Done, over. And then watch that woman walk out of a courtroom and look at me and say, yeah, I killed your daughter, and there ain't nothing you can do about it. You understand that? That's gonna be the hardest thing, because of little errors that, i- it ain't like it's new. I can understand new technology with DNA today as it grows, and then an error being made because it's new, you know what I'm saying? But something that's been around for years. I mean, they used to take photographs, they took photographs of Jesse James when he was killed.
Yeah.
But they, you don't take a photograph of a guy that puts in the sheriff report, I cut myself that night, and that's one of the main things you're supposed to do? Let me put it this way, they cannot, that's what Jesse Weed said, he don't, that's why I say even when you're prosecuting, look at him and say, I can't answer those questions. The remaining victims of that fire, which was Mary Anna Kenny, that's the mom and the boyfriend, and my daughter, she's dead. The remaining victims are automatically supposed to be brought in and questioned at, if there's no medical treatment to them. We all know there wasn't. See, he had a scratch on his hand. Their clothes are to be removed and collected and photographed. None of it was done. Instead, the truck that was sitting in the middle of the road with the doors open and the truck running.
Pictures.
Got, they got them to, Vernon releases the truck to them, which the truck's part of the crime scene, and lets them drive off and go home and take a shower. Are you kidding me? You're gonna tell me as many boards that man's been on, and I know he's been on, cause he rags about how many boards he's been on. You're gonna tell me he didn't know what the protocol was on this murder? He didn't know what you're supposed to do with a murder case? Why do I want that man as my sheriff if he can't even do regular, just regular crime scene, you know?
And the privacy of your hearts, do you guys think that this is a lot of evidence that should've been in your hearts? Do you think, wow, this, this guy comes in with his daughter, and he, he does have a lot of conflicting things? Do you feel that in your hearts as, as humans and as parents?
Yeah, compelling problems there.
Yeah.
Once you've got it, and I would suggest we'll, we'll make a call or two. I don't have any idea, can't make.
No, I know that. I know.
They'll respond to us.
I know that. I know that. Like I said, it ain't about money. It ain't about.
Joke money, Mal.
It ain't about anything like that, but if I don't do what I have to do. Because I can tell you right now, and I'll be honest with all three of you, and I like it, this is not personal, this is not none. I will file a petition in the courts, over here at the Common Pleas, every other week, requesting to see the ladder. I will then file another one requesting to see the boat. I will file another one. I will tie that courtroom up with so much interrogate, uh, litigations. And they gotta come in and prove to it in, under the, under God and under the judge. They gotta come in here and say, okay, Mr. Brandon, you asked to see the ladder, here's the ladder. That's what they gotta bring in and show me. I will. I'm telling you, I, 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 this is her year, two thousand eighteen, I'm done. I, for one whole year, two thousand seventeen, I started January the seventh on this. I started meeting with you guys. You guys have done, I got nothing against you. You guys have done everything, everything I've asked.
You can't do anymore, you've done a lot. You know what I mean?
Right. But I'm not gonna put fire. And I would expect the same thing out of Jack, Tony, and Dan. I would expect the same thing out of you if it was your daughter. I would not have, I would sit back and say, wow, that's, that's a father. That's what a father should do. Ask questions. That's what you're supposed to do. Just like Vernon Stanford, sitting there and telling me, wow, man, that's a good question to ask that mom, but you know, we gotta, you gotta ask it. Well, it's the same thing. You want the answers from her and him of what happened that night. Well, I want the answers from you to why you didn't do this, 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 A, B, C, and D. You understand what I'm saying? Fair is fair. You want the, you know, the answers to why they did what they did that night in that fire, and why she made a phone call, and why, you know? I mean, just like the boyfriend. The boyfriend, right there, I got it, got it. And me and Ron Stephen talked about this this morning. The boyfriend, the mom and even him said that he was one hundred percent deaf, hearing aids in his ears, one hundred percent deaf. They were destroyed in the fire. Let me ask you a question. How did that man take a lie detector test that day? He had no hearing aids. How did he hear the examination? Cause he went that night and took the lie detector, but his hearing aids melted in the fire. And he's a hundred percent deaf. How did that man take that? How did he even ask, answer any questions to the sheriff? You know, the, the cops, you know, when they took his statement. How did he do that?
Question.
Did they sign language, the, the examining, or?
The whole question was that the, that they had left the house that night with the William that we had thought was doing the molesting. He's not accusing the mom, he's just accusing her of letting, letting it to happen, you know, to her and their daughter, like she was afraid or something was wrong. Their vehicle was running outside, you see it in the photos of the house. If you're, if you, if you were home, your car would be in the driveway. It wouldn't be parked, it's running, but you can see the lights on the, the tailgates.
He told us about that.
But the truck was never even took his.
Cause they're hearing, he would have a hearing aids, which was, she's making it sound like they lost it, and they're wanting to get to the daughter, twenty-one and a half minutes. Do you, could you imagine if a house on Main Street caught on fire, or Fayette, right by the, the fire department, even with technology twenty years ago, and not be able to go up and say, oh, my God, somebody help me, or pull the red phone at the sheriff's office, somebody would help you? They didn't even think that. They went to the neighbors and sat on the porch and watched it burn. I would be, I would be completely burned up to here. I don't care if I fell through the floor or whatever. It just seems like there's a lot of things that could be questioned in a, in a, maybe.
There's a lot of lies. There's a lot of lies, because I'll be honest with you, just like when, when, I've got the paper in here, where they took my DNA. I had no problem going to that sheriff's Anex Building, letting swab my mouth, whatever it takes to put the people that did this away and to my daughter, I'm all for it. But then, to lie, to lie to me and say, well, we sent your DNA into the database and you came back cleared. But then there was no DNA in the database. So, why'd you lie to me? Why are you telling me you took Kenny's DNA, and this person's DNA, and this person's DNA, and you sent it in, and they all passed? Passed what? What did you, what did you match with? Because if you had DNA, you wouldn't have exhumed my daughter. So, what did you get my DNA for and all these other people, and then send it in? Send it in where? What did you, what, what database did you run it through? There was no DNA. You let it get contaminated and it was destroyed in the beginning. So, why are you lying? See what I'm saying about the lies? Why are you lying to me? I would be ease of mind if you would be honest with me and tell me, Donald, this is this, this is this. You would hear my mouth. I'm, I'm being, I'm, I'm being for real. You didn't, you guys didn't know, never knew me, did you? Until McKinsey died. Never met me. Never. Never met me. I'm a quiet person, but I'm also a mad, angry person when I'm being lied to. It ain't no different than me standing there and lying to you and saying, you, hey, Tony, you said this, and you're like, I didn't say it. You would be mad, you'd be upset. It's the same, you know what I'm saying? It's the same aspect there. And then I got the prosecutor now, that's kinda getting this pandemic wide. If it's about the money, it ain't gonna matter, because I can guarantee you, at the end of the day, somebody will write a check, because you can't prove what I'm asking for, you cannot bring into a courtroom and lay it in front of me and say, you're full of crap, Donald, here it is.
That's what I'm
You're not gonna see it happen.
Let go if it
That's the only reason I made the amount the way I made it. It's nothing against Fayette County, it's nothing against you three. It's because of, I'm tired of stuff being swept under the rug.
If he came in here and said, I, I, me and my ex-wife were having problems, I think that her boyfriend and the son was molesting my daughter, he'd be like, well, how does that prove that there was a, a fire to cover? There's just so many, it's, it's like, it's not just anger, it's anger, but it's not just anger. I remember years, he was super quiet and laid back, and he'd talk at seminars.
I do a lot for kids, and you gotta know that.
Yeah, we passed out three hundred little kids' toys, why would you do this? It's just a memory of a little girl who loved Christmas, and they're like, we can really take this toy? I'm like, yeah, it's yours.
Yeah, I did that thing this year.
You know, you try to do something positive or something negative, so that people will respect you a little bit more and, and take into hand.
You know, I did that thing this year for Christmas, ten thousand lights, did a big thing, collected over five hundred toys, three hundred sixty kids showed up.
Six bikes.
You know, all that stuff, you know?
That's the non
You don't hear nothing about that, you don't hear nothing about that, you don't hear nothing.
Paper didn't run it.
But then, you hear Derek Myers' name all over the newspaper, because he passed out in the courtroom, are you kidding me?
Silly.
I don't wanna take y'all off, cause I only had an hour with you guys.
Thank you, Donald.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, I mean, thank you for the opportunity and the time, and we Now, would I get a share from you guys, or do I get a schedule, nothing, nothing, Ray?